This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, everybody. The time is now 7:01. I apologize for delay. Had some technical issues there. It is Monday, January 3rd, 2022. Happy New Year, everyone, and welcome. If I can get everyone to silence your cellphones and rise for the Pledge of Belief.
I believe in the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands.
One nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Carol. All right. Ms. Hyler? You go ahead and take the roll. Councilmember Rounds?
Present. Couldn't hear.
No, that's okay. I'll repeat.
Here.
Present.
Councilmember Smith?
Here.
Here. I think that just two chairs empty and everybody's here. All right. Thank you. At this time, I'm going to call down. I've got three to do. Councilmember Rounds, we are going to wait until you are able to be in person to continue your oath of office. You are fine at this point, from my understanding. But at your next in-person meeting, we will swear you in.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. And with that, where Pete, do you have the? Do you have the things? Are they in here? I am just. Oh, the center. Oh, the.
All right.
All right, Mr. Burke? Welcome back, by the way.
Thank you.
After how many years already? Too many years to go back to. All right. For those of you that don't know, Mr. Burke served on local and previously and has decided to come back and join us for another round of service. So with a board that we appreciate you. Go ahead and raise your right hand for me and repeat after me. I, J.J. Burke.
I, J.J. Burke.
Do solemnly affirm
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and Constitution and laws of the State of Washington and Constitution and laws of the State of Washington.
Of the State of Washington.
And that I will faithfully and impartially perform and discharge the duties of the Office of City of Woodland Council, Position 1, according to law to the best of my ability. Congratulations and welcome aboard. Who's dating this? Am I dating this for today or for the first? For today. All right. No. All right. Welcome aboard. Welcome back. Ms. Plaza? Welcome back for a second round. Welcome. You too, as well, are joining us for another day at the circus. So welcome. Go ahead and raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, David Plaza.
I, David Plaza.
Do solemnly affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and Constitution and laws of the State of Washington and that I will faithfully and impartially perform and discharge the duties of the Office of City of Woodland Council, Position 3, according to the law to the best of my ability. All right. Congratulations. New? My name's on this one. May, let's see. No, you can't have. Do you want to say anything?
Glad to be here. Hope to see you guys a while for another four years.
Are you, are you Mr. Frederick? All right. Ms. Roland? Oh, wow. Okay. All right. You ready? All right. Go ahead and raise your right hand for me. I, Jen Holland.
I, Jen Holland.
Do solemnly affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution and laws of the State of Washington and that I will faithfully and impartially perform and discharge the duties of the Office of City of Woodland Council, Position 6, according to the law to the best of my ability. All right. Congratulations. A hobby sign right here for me. All right. Well, welcome aboard. Congratulations. All right. We have no other presentations this evening and we will get to Ms. Rounds at the next. Thank you. All right. And with that, we're going to move to Citizen Communications for items not on the agenda. And up first, we have Mr. Boyle. Goodbye, Mrs. Johnson. Ms. Wild.
Hi, thank you, Keith Wild, Woodland Planner State. A couple of things I have that I just wanted to mention in working on the gazebo. Getting the gazebo rebuild. I've spoken with Pulse. They're on board and ready to put in whatever needs to happen to Pulse. So we'll get together on that. And then 100th Planner State Celebration, June 6th through 19th. We've sent out the sponsor sheets and have had a great response so far. We're expecting a lot more. Tomorrow, we will have our meeting at Columbia Bank, 6 o'clock. Our contest is done as of tomorrow. I believe the applications for the court are all done, too, and we'll be doing the introduction of the script for that. Putting the schedule together and we'd like to hear from you if you're interested in solving the Planner's Day or that question.
When will the artwork be announced or shown? Is it, when is that being judged?
So tomorrow, we will have our meeting and we'll decide if we have all of the entries.
Gotcha. Okay. Awesome. Looking forward to it. All right. Thank you very much. Anyone else for items not on the agenda that did not sign up that's in the gallery? Now's your opportunity to step forward. Anyone online? Seeing no one, seeing no one, moving on to items on the agenda. I have no one signed up in the gallery. Now's your opportunity to step forward if you failed to do so at the beginning of the meeting. Anyone online? Seeing no one, moving on. Come to the portion of tonight's agenda.
Move to approve the agenda.
Moved by Councilmember Chapman, seconded by Councilmember Plaza. Ms. Hyler? Councilmember Rounds?
Hi.
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 Councilmember Smith?
Hi.
Hi.
All right. The agenda has been approved. Moving on to reports of City Council. Ms. Rounds, you have?
Mr. Mayor? Yes.
Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
With, with our bell ringing that we did for Rotary. Can you hear? Well, no, you didn't, but you did good. No, you didn't. You did good, but we raised $2,433.08. So.
All right. Good job.
You did $288.00.
I could swear I had $300.
Thank you very much and thanks to everyone.
I could swear I had $300. Mr. Smith even stopped by. I conned money out of his children. All kinds of people stopped by and I told them, get their dang wallets out.
We appreciate it, too.
You bet. You bet. No, I'm glad you guys raised a lot of money there. Good job. All right. Anyone else? For those of you in the gallery that don't know, but I'm, I'm good for a good competition. So, and I don't like to lose, so. I may have to ring the bell two times next year just to make sure I, I make it for it. I was trying to hit $400 and I think, well, clearly I hit three or, what'd she say, $1,000? I got $1,000 of that?
$280.
Oh, $280 something. I rounded up. I rounded up. $3,000, I think, is what I raised when, one day. I rounded up. Right. Yeah.
Twenty.
Oh, I was, oh, I did. I did. Number, number of community members stopped by. I was very appreciative of those I saw. Mr. McMinn being one of them. I saw the Ray Kings as well. Who else did I see? I saw this Councilmember Smith stopped by. There's lots of people. Lots of people. Nobody threw any tomatoes, which was good, but, or, or cornucopias, whatever. What do you do on Christmas trees? All right. Moving on, public safety. Who was there tonight? Oh, that one was canceled. Public Works. Oh, Ms. Holland, fire away.
Because Monty and Carol are.
Moping.
Yeah.
And I guess, just make sure before we go on to, make sure those microphones are close enough to you and that they're on, just so everybody at home can hear.
So we started our meeting at 5:00. Looks like I took some notes. I don't ever do this. Monty does. One Carol does. So. So we are moving right along with the changing out the tube and tank things for, what is that? WTP improvement. So.
Water treatment.
Water treatment plant. So interestingly enough, they're switching from stain, from PVC to stainless because you get double the life out of it, which that sounds like a really good idea. Then you don't have to mess with it anytime soon. What else? Let's see here. Water treatment plant, again, the number two pump will be replaced at the Rainy Well in January. For water, the 1 million gallon reservoir is being cleaned at the end of January. I know it's fascinating. So. Also, what, something that's on our agenda tonight is the West Side Avenue Water Railroad Crossing. That is on our council agenda for the lowest bidder approval. We also have the same thing for Davidson Water Railroad Crossing. The sewer lift station, oh, Calitz Clean Sweep took care of lift stations, 2, 3, 6, and 9 is preventative maintenance. Another good idea. Do things ahead of time. Sidewalks right now, Dylan, our new Public Works Person, is driving around town evaluating sidewalks for future projects to get repaired. Some other things you might notice around town is that Public Works is also changing out the lighting to LED. So it saves city taxpayers money because it goes less. And they've replaced about 50% of those since Ms. Coleman took over. So thank her for being able to see when you drive. We met our new hires. That's Dylan. Kevin wasn't here. And our new superintendent, Tim. He's been coming to our Public Works meeting. Fascinating gentleman. And Nick joined our team with the Public Works Department. Let's see. What else do we have going on? Oh, in downtown, Valentine's Island is scheduled for some forecast in January. And all the Christmas stuff before somebody starts whining. Christmas is coming down this month and then Valentine's will be going up. Let's see. Oh, and three people took some bucket truck training. So they can be certified to help with tree trimming that's going to happen later this month. And let's see, what else do we have? Oh, over on, let's see, oh, over on Gun Club. They received some money. What are we doing there? These projects, we're not granting for funding for the cycle, but when they do, they're going to be shooting to repair Gun Club. That's over in my neck of the woods. And if you've driven down the road, you know why they need some funding. And the Federal Highway Crossing Program, they're, what is it? They're smoothing with construction documents, which are 90% complete, and DOT approval cycles right now. They're trying to coordinate with BNSF, BNSF, to move forward on that. And something I learned of in our Public Works meeting, and I don't think most people know, is that our mayor and planning, the planning department and Public Works work together to approach Calitz County.
Oh, thank you. I didn't know where we were going with that, Ms. Holland. I don't know if you could see the terror on my face. I wasn't sure what was coming next.
They collaborated and at the end of December, they approached Calitz County to get some funding for Exit 21, and it has been tentatively approved. So that's a big deal.
It's a big deal. Big deal.
And I'm really proud of you guys for doing that.
Thank you.
It's really cool and I'm excited that our county commissioners were down for the whole project. And that's about all I have.
All right.
I did it justice.
All right. You did. You did great. Ms. Coleman, on our, Ms. Holland mentioned the stainless steel pipes and that action item is on our agenda this evening. And I believe that is the set action item K. No. Standby.
Action item K, I think.
Okay. Is it K?
Yeah.
Filter number one change orders 1, 2, and 3 with stellar J. Can you just explain, similarly the way that it was explained to me during our exec team meeting this morning about the cost and, and how, why we're doing what we're doing?
Right. When we initially went to develop what we needed for a restoration of our plant filters, there's always an uncertainty of what's going to happen. So when we put these folks' work together, we didn't know what was going to happen underneath that media. You know, they've been in there for years and you don't know when they renew all that media, what's underneath there. If the tubing's going to be adequate or working or whatever. So when we tore all the filter media out, we found out the tubing, two thirds of the tubing were not functioning properly in order to filter our water correctly. Doesn't mean that our water is not pure. Doesn't mean our water is not clean, but what we're saying is it wasn't operating. So what we're doing is those PVC pipes or tubes that are in there to push air up through that filter media, since the product water is, they actually need to be replaced. And so the upgrade cost for a PVC versus stainless steel is about 20%. So your PVC pipe, your lead pipe, that's about $8,000 and 12% of the heat. If you go stainless steel, which would be totally refurbished, if you have to do this against a water filter plant, you're looking at twice the lifetime and about $20,000 increase in cost. So if this makes any sense, the PVC is, when you can refurbish your stainless steel later on down the road, it gets twice the life expectancy if not more, if you ever have to go and do that. So we opted to go with the stainless steel. So these change orders, this change order is for going with the unforeseen and unknown, but we did budget for it because we didn't know what we were going to run issues. So we have, we have budget funds in our budget for it, but we did not, we don't have it in our contract enough. We didn't know we were going to need it. So when you're looking at this change order, there's no amendment to our, our budget for additional funding. We're just saying that we're asking for the contract to go from 200 some thousand now to 100, I think it has to be 550,000 or due to the fact we have the change order covered for that, the new stainless steel tubing and the timing associated with it for the long lead time and for the additional man hours for our contract management and engineering to determine what happens. So that's, that's what those changes are for.
Questions about that? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Coleman. I appreciate that. And with that, reports of advisory committees. The Chamber of Commerce, I've asked that, Ms. Miller is going to start reporting on chamber business on the second meeting of every month. We do have on action item L this evening, a change in council rules stating that. So she is not here this evening. Ms. Rounds, do you have anything to report for Chamber at all?
No, not at this time.
All right. Thank you. So tomorrow is a big day, Ms. King, Ray King. Are you able to speak to that? Are you on the board still?
Yes, I'm on the board.
Oh, Tim. I didn't, I didn't know that we had changed. I'm sorry. Thank you. Does anyone want to, no report or go ahead? Okay. Yep. Feel free.
So tomorrow, what the Chamber has done is changed the, the board's action to change to a monthly first Tuesday meeting, which would actually be a longer meeting with the speaker and then the third Tuesday would be a networking lunch. And so on the second and fourth, there won't be a Chamber meeting anymore. And at this first one, Travis, Tracy, myself, and Chief Kelly and Michael Green will be speaking about the state and the community. And the topic is what we've seen and what we are anticipating in 2022.
All right. Thank you.
And that has a remote link, right?
Is there a remote link for that?
Yes, you have the RSPP with Denise Miller, our Chamber Executive Director, to get the link for that. There is a cost if you do attend and have the lunch, but you can attend and not have lunch and just listen, but you need the RSPP. It will be at Anadote and the downstairs.
Downstairs, smart.
And it starts at 11:30.
Oh, 11, oh, I thought it was in here. Okay. And then is that, those meetings, I do have a question. Sorry. Please come back. Are those for members only or is that? It's open to anyone. Okay.
And we kind of, we drafted all through the year some topics, including one that you guys will probably be interested in, but we always have the Legislative Members' Council. We're going to have a big meeting for that one while it's having a very open space after the legislature is done and bring everybody together to talk about everything at one time. And then when we do elections, we'll bring everybody together. Instead of bringing it week after week, it'll be one time for everybody.
And the calls start next week?
Yes.
Okay.
7:30 at the Chamber office, but those are also Zoom. Keep an attentive.
You have to RSVP.
As you saw, the, the state legislature has moved to complete virtual today.
I did not. Thank you.
So any passing up there, they are not reserving any rooms. They are not giving in for a meeting.
God forbid the people be able to attend in their own home. Right. Anyway, I'll reserve my comments. Thank you, Ms. Ray King, for firing us up this evening. Not on purpose, I know. I was, I was not aware of that. So thank you. I guess maybe I might have something else to say now. All right. DWR? Meeting for DWR? No? Okay. Except the decorations are coming down, but I know that's Public Works. Is that partnership with DWR? No? Okay. And then the COG, and the meeting was canceled for the month. Okay. Perfect. All right. Thank you. Moving on to reports of city officers. I'll go first. So bell ringing, Ms. Rounds, Mrs. Rounds stated that we had a great time. Family always goes out on Christmas Eve and we ring the bell at Safeway for a few hours. It's always nice getting out there and giving my wife a reprieve to get ready for household people. But it's, it's always a good time. Little Liam was very happy this year. There was no fights between the boys, which was very exciting. This was that we got in the car and he was so proud of himself and he said, hey, we didn't, there's no fights. I said, we're not home yet. You can't, you can't say that. We're not home. Yes. And Mrs. Holland stated the Calitz, we attended a workshop with the Calitz County Board of Commissioners, I believe it was on the 21st. Seems like it was forever ago, with Kittleson Associates and Mr. Boyce and myself were there and it was a very positive experience. Everyone was completely on board. I didn't hear one negative comment coming from the commissioners. They, they admitted to the fact that some of the traffic issues we have in town are from their citizens coming to and from the county and development that's occurring in the county. So they were more than happy to, what was the word to use, Mrs. Holland? They, they didn't promise, but they, what did you?
Oh, I know.
Committed. They, they, they committed $2 million towards the project, which is fantastic. So we look forward to that partnership and moving forward with the, with the Calitz County Board of Commissioners and that Exit 21 project. There's a few things that are on your agenda this evening. One is committees. That's action item C. I don't know if you can, I don't think we need to pull it up. Has everyone had an opportunity to look at the committees and the ones that have been suggested for them? Okay. And then, Mr. Burke, we also are suggesting that you join the DWR as the Calitz, or as the City Council Liaison. Are you okay with that? Okay. We know that you're, you're down there. So, and you, you've had some dealings with that in the past, though. Not too early. I don't think it will be. It'd probably be an afternoon meeting. I think one other meeting, are they quarterly? The meeting, so it's, it's not, not a huge commitment on that one. And then, Mr. Chapman, we're asking that you also be liaison for the park board as well, if you're okay with that. Okay. City Council retreat dates coming up. I'd like to look at Saturdays in February and if there's any conflicts. And I'll start with Mrs. Rounds because she's usually the one that has the conflicts before we, before we go down the rest of the council here this evening. Mrs. Rounds, are, do you have any conflicts with the Saturdays in February? Carol? Oh, she's going to get her calendar. Mr. Smith, do you have any conflicts with Saturdays in February?
No, it doesn't look like there's any conflicts in February.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Rounds. Mr. Smith?
I don't think I do.
Okay. Going down the line, Mr. Burke? Ms. Chapman? Ms. Plaza?
It would depend on what Saturday we go.
Okay.
I do work some Saturdays during the month, but if I can, I don't have my February schedule yet.
Okay.
However, once I find out what Saturdays I'm free, I can let you know and hopefully what we can work with that.
Okay. Mrs. Holland?
Um, no, I'm just going with the, whatever day. I just got to get.
Okay. All right. And Ms. Roland? Okay. Let's see. Shall we shoot for the 19th then? Can we say the 19th? That gives a few more weeks, just in case we need to. Tenably? Okay. Tenably, the 19th for the council retreat will be in these chambers here. We will start at, oh, God, I hate to say eight. Nine. Eight, eight forty-five? Ten? Let's check with the executive team. Is anyone on vacation on the 19th? I should ask. No, I knew you. Denied. You do. It's called the council retreat. Mr. Boyce, do you have any issues with the 19th? Okay. Perfect. All right. Do you want to go earlier? You want to go later? 8:30. We'll have fellowship from 8 to 8:30 and 8:30 the meeting will start. Fellowship means we can show up late. 8:30 or 8 o'clock. We'll shoot it for 8 o'clock with the meeting starting at 8:30. Yeah, it'll be here in these chambers.
So eight?
Eight. Yes. I know. Well.
Why do you get up so early?
No, I don't. I thought you were complaining we weren't starting early enough. All right. Well, we're doing eight. Then we can get out here early and we can all have a nap. Okay.
I like it.
Oh, thank you, Mrs. Rounds.
You're welcome.
I'll be more like Mrs. Rounds.
How long do those typically last?
Most of the day. Most of the day. I think, I think our last one went from like 9 to 4:30, I think. But we had a lot on the agenda. We, we're going to switch it up this year and have the department heads come in and, or the exec team come in and give presentations Um, but we had a lot on the agenda. We, we're going to switch it up this year and have the department heads come in and, or the exec team come in and give, uh, presentations. Um, on their departments, so we'll, we'll get some face time with each one of them individually. And then, uh, the afternoon will be discussion on moving forward with the city. So it depends, depends how much you talk. Now, Mr. Frederick is no longer part of the panel, so it's possible it could be done by two. I hate to throw Mr. Frederick under the bus, but he deserves it. After all these years, there's no, like, I'm not getting anything back right now, so this is great. Um, city action days, uh, is going to be all online this year and that is going to be beginning at eight AM again. Uh, on the twenty seventh of January. So typically, uh, what we do is we gather up and go up for a few days up to Olympia and meet with our legislators. Uh, clearly, that's not happening again this year. Thank you, Mrs. Ray King, uh, for delivering that message. And city action days is no exception, so it will be online from eight to noon, so it's a four hour program. I encourage all of you to sign up. Um, there is a small fee that goes with that, but normally we spend a lot of money on that trip and so it's a twenty five dollar fee. Uh, you learn a lot. It's from the comfort of your home through Zoom. So, um, if you're able to attend that, please let us know as soon as you can. Mr. Voice? Yeah, we'll get you, we'll get you registered. So I highly encourage all of you, if you're able to, to attend that on the twenty seventh. Um, and I think, I feel like there was something else I was supposed to discuss. Hold on, standby. Oh. Where is the? What's under, oh, it's under act. We'll be, um, electing, the council will be selecting a mayor pro temp. Uh, this evening, I action item D, there is a process to that. Um, so when we get to that, we will, I'll have to pull out the book just to make sure that we follow it properly. I think I, I think I know the rules, so I'll pull it out. Um, and then also the change in rules this evening, uh, was for, uh, to put chamber at the second meeting only. So Ms. Miller has agreed to that, uh, to come and give a report for chamber on the second meeting of every month. Uh, so that's a change in rules. And then also there was some cleanup language on when we report out on some of the committees. Uh, so that is the only change that are within, um, action item L this evening. So with that, Mr. Voice?
So, so that change in reporting activities, at one point we changed the basis of the meeting. Uh, we, the last week to change when they report out, so technically this would. Uh, put us in compliance with the current operation. So right now the meetings are reporting out the date and the, that would make that happen. Um. I also wanted to let, uh, council know we're still in negotiations with both, uh, Department of Public Works teams groups. That's what we know. Our next meeting is set for February third, um, in progress and, uh. I'll be put back after that meeting. A reminder, uh, our next meeting will not be on a Monday, it will be Tuesday, January eighteenth, and not Monday. We're mentioning city action days, uh. Tomorrow, the twenty fourth, we're preparing this taking place in this room at one PM, and that's interesting. And, uh, I think we should meet seven PM on January twentieth, very exciting. I also want to mention that, uh, action item F, uh, to honor, uh, the second meeting. And what you're talking about is going to be the marketing of our council on the meeting, as well as.
Questions for Mr. Voice this evening? All right, seeing none. Uh, typically, the way we've been, uh, you have some. Mr. Mr. Randolph, is there any, um. Guidance for council members testifying during that hearing tomorrow? For those that do attend. Okay, gotcha. I know sometimes during planning commission meetings, we have some, we have some challenges there, but, um, just want to make sure. We're good? Okay. So with that, um, Ms. Randolph, you have a report this evening? And Mrs. Anderson is not here. Uh, Chief Galt? Fire's not here. Mr. Goddard? He had a report this evening. Perfect, thank you. And Ms. Coleman? Thank you very much. Questions for the executive team? All right, seeing none. Moving on to consent items.
Move to approve consent items?
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Chapman, seconded by Councilmember Plaza. Ms. Hyler? Councilmember Smith?
Bye.
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 The consent items have passed. Mr. Mr. Smith is only on my screen. I don't know if anybody else saw that. Uh, he's, he has a very large piece of paper that he has drawn out with a big I on it. So, um, just so there's no confusion on exactly what he is voting for. All right, consent items have passed. Moving on to action items, action item C, twenty twenty-two council committees. Assign council members to council committees.
Make a motion to approve action item committee.
Moved by Councilmember Rounds, seconded by Councilmember Chapman, Councilmember Rounds.
It, as long as everybody agrees, I think it's great.
Councilmember Chapman?
I concur.
Further discussion? Got it. Further discussion? All right, seeing none. Ms. Hyler, would you please take the role on action item C, twenty twenty-two council committees? Councilmember Smith?
Hi.
Councilmember Rounds?
Hi.
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 The eyes have it, action item C has passed. Moving on to action item D, nominate and select mayor pro temp. Like mayor pro temp.
I make a motion to nominate Monty Smith.
Second.
Any other nominations? Seeing none? It said no. Appears there are no other nominations. At this time, we will take a role on the nomination and selection of Mr. Councilmember Smith for mayor pro temp for a biannual appointment. Further discussion on this? Ms. Hyler, would you please take the role to nominate Mr. Smith, who looks extremely satisfied with what's happening right now? Councilmember Smith?
Hi.
Hi. Councilmember Rounds? Councilmember Rounds?
Hi.
Hi.
The eyes have it. Congratulations, Mr. Smith.
Well done.
Well done. Once. Once again, in my absence, you will be the supreme leader of the city of Woodlands. By the way, I'll be gone in two weeks, or, or about two weeks. All right, moving on to action item. Action item E. Z T A dash two one dash zero zero one ordinance one four nine four, amending the Woodland Municipal Code to remove the city council from the land use app, appeal process, final reading.
Look to approve action item E, and I'll just Reader's Digest version it, uh, amending the D P M C to remove the city council from the land use appeal process, final reading.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Plaza, seconded by Councilmember Chapman, Councilmember Plaza.
Um, if I. I read, I was up to speed when I went through this. This is basically, to use an example, like with the RV thing, when they appealed to remove us from that whole process, correct?
Yeah.
Perfect. That's all I got. Mr. Chapman?
I can tell you, yeah, we need to pull legislation, judicial, separate the two. It's a good move to do that.
Further discussion? Seeing none. Ms. Hyler, would you please take the role for ordinance number one four nine four? Councilmember Rounds?
Hi.
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 Councilmember Smith?
Hi.
The eyes have it. Moving on to action item F, ordinance number one four nine six, bond ordinance to finance acquisition of two three six Davidson Avenue, final reading.
I'll go ahead. Uh, move to approve action item F, ordinance fourteen ninety-six, bond ordinance to finance acquisition of two thirty-six Davidson Avenue, final reading.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Plaza, seconded by Councilmember Chapman, Councilmember Plaza.
Uh, we talked about this a few times. Uh, at some points, the city is, is going to grow and then we. Instead of waiting to find the space when we absolutely need it, it's better to plan ahead and have the space ready for when we do. Um, I do have a couple of questions, though.
We do have our, our bond folks and, uh, folks from DA Davidson on the line as well.
Perfect, because I am not a, a lawyer. I don't play one on TV. And so when I was reading through a lot of the stuff, it all admitted I didn't understand it. So, um, as far as repayment goes, the way I read it, this could potentially put the city in debt, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so if that happens, how will, how are we repaying the debt? Is it just going to be like a regular loan, just X amount over time? Or are we expected to pay it all at once? How's that work?
I'll go first. Thanks, Mark, for being on. Uh, Jim Nelson, DA Davidson. So your average annual payment is about thirty two thousand a year. You have a portion of that, you have interest payments on June first and December first of each year, principal portion on December first. And it's a fifteen year financing. So basically, you'll have fifteen years of annual payments. The bonds are secured by the city's general fund.
Okay, is that in the budget already or no?
And Mr. Voice?
So if city council approves this resolution, that will come to city council with our budget.
Okay, but technically, I mean, the money is already there. We need just to, you know, pull it from the different funds. This isn't something we have to worry about down the road. The city coming to us and asking us to raise taxes on people or anything like that to pay for that, correct?
It's covered from water sewer rates and some general fund funds, um.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Chapman?
Yeah, I agree with everything. We're just trying to be proactive instead of reactive on it. It's a good shot me on moving forward.
Further discussion? All right, seeing none. Ms. Hyler, would you please take the role on action item F, ordinance number one four nine six, bond ordinance to finance acquisition of two three six Davidson Avenue, final reading. Councilmember Smith? Councilmember Rounds?
Hi.
The eyes have it. Moving on to action item G, ordinance number one four nine seven, personnel policy amending holidays, final reading.
Move to approve action, agenda item G, ordinance fourteen nine ninety-seven, personal policy amending holidays.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Chapman, seconded by Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Chapman?
Oh, this is the realignment to get everybody on board, everybody's on, that are three different. Contracts and three different things. It's aligned everybody with everybody on the same basis of holidays.
Councilmember Smith?
From, from my understanding, it's taking the Christmas Eve holiday and turning it into a floating holiday. So it's not really eliminating a holiday for anybody. It's just, uh, making that holiday more flexible for, uh, if somebody wants to use it on a day.
Further discussion. Mr. Plaza?
All right, yeah, just a real quick question. Um, Christmas Eve, this is like, uh, Councilmember Smith said, this is basically removing Christmas Eve. Not removing it, but they're turning it into a floating holiday. So instead of everybody taking Christmas Eve off, they can use it on another day, correct?
Mr. Voice?
So it does get a little complicated. It's not good to speed out, uh, public party agreements that still have Christmas Eve, uh, risks. So right now we're, we're meeting with both team units, and that means one of the items on table. Uh, the police association guild also has a Christmas. So the idea behind this is to set a personnel policy which will cover exempt employees that aren't covered by public bargaining agreements. And this basically sets the policy for city council wants to move. Um, so we still may end up in a situation for a few years, uh, if and until we can change, uh, the holiday provision to a bargain agreement. Where, uh, so let's see, council adopts this. So the exempt would not get Christmas Eve as a holiday unless they took their floating holiday back. Depending on what the teamsters do, for instance, we'll talk about city hall. If they do not, we do not change the provision in the public bargaining agreement. There could be a situation where operational, we would have to close on Christmas Eve. The exempt employees who fall under this would either work that day, albeit it may not be open to the public, or they could choose to get floating holiday. So the long term, uh, idea behind this is to get everyone on the same page as council member Chuck and the table is our deal. But until that happens, you know, there will be a little, little bit of, uh, transition, uh, that we have to go through, so that the followers are on the same.
Okay. So if, if, if we pass this and we're still in talks with. You know, unions and guilds or whatever. Are those, those people won't be able to utilize that until we come to some sort of agreement with the guild, correct? Or no?
So it would cover the exempt employees that aren't covered by a public bargain.
Right.
So, but it would not cover those.
Okay. Okay, so they'll, they'll stay under the same thing until their, it's contract is done. Okay. Okay, um, yeah, that's all.
Mr. Burke?
What is the rush to get this through? Because, uh, I mean, you've got the contracts you've got to work through and. Ninety percent of the employees don't want to lose a, uh, December twenty fourth holiday. So why, why do we need to push this?
Mr. Voice?
Well, the reason the discussion about holidays came up is because the federal government is recognizing G T as a. Well, the reason of discussion about holidays is because the federal government has recognized Juneteenth as a new holiday. We do have the bargaining agreements of municipal committees, or we're requesting that additional holiday. Cities counter with what's before you now. So the idea behind it is that if someone wants to celebrate Juneteenth as a holiday, that floating holiday could be taken on that day with supervisor approval, or if they want to celebrate Christmas Eve, with supervisor approval, they could take that. So that's a reason for the discussion of holidays.
I will add too, that this comes to for council every year. This gets with us. Anything further? Further discussion? All right, seeing none. Ms. Hyler, would you please take the roll on action item G, ordinance number 1497? Councilmember Rounds?
Aye.
Mr. Burke, would you please give the reason for abstention? Further council rules? Mr. Randolph?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mrs. Rounds?
Could you have Mr. Burke to speak into the microphone a little better? I couldn't hear what he said when he talked.
Yes.
Speak into the microphone.
Yes, Mr. Randolph is looking something up before we continue as well, just so you're aware.
Okay, thank you.
There you go. Ms. Randolph?
Councilmember Rounds?
Aye.
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 All right, the ayes have it. Moving on to action item H, authorized mayor to sign professional service agreement for construction management and inspection with Gray and Osborne for the West Scott and Davidson Burlington Northern Santa Fe Water Main Crossing project.
Move to approve action item H, authorized mayor to sign professional service agreement for construction management inspection with Gray and Osborne for the West Scott and Davidson BNSF Water Main Crossing project.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Plaza, seconded by Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Plaza?
No comment.
Councilmember Smith?
Yeah, this is a contract for Gray and Osborne for construction management and inspection of the Davidson and Scott Crossing. This project will require a lot of coordination with the railroad and paperwork with the railroad, so it's definitely needed. Gray and Osborne was also the engineers, so they're pretty knowledgeable of the project, which will make it go a lot smoother. That's about it for what I have.
Thank you. Further discussion? All right, seeing none. Ms. Hyler, would you please take the roll on action item A, authorizing signature for professional service agreement for construction management inspection with Gray and Osborne for the West Scott and Davidson BNSF Water Main Crossing project? Councilmember Rounds?
Aye.
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 All right, the ayes have it. Moving on to action item I, authorized mayor to sign professional service agreement with Gray and Osborne for consulting engineering for the West Scott asbestos concrete water main replacement project.
Move to approve, authorized mayor to sign professional service agreement with Gray and Osborne for consulting engineering for the West Scott asbestos concrete water main replacement project.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Chapman, seconded by Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Chapman?
I said enough kind of agree with you.
Councilmember Smith?
So this is the engineering cost for replacing 1,300 feet of old asbestos concrete water main. This is in the budget from the, budgeted out of the American Relief Plan dollars, and construction is planned for 2023 and should be presented to the council upon project bidding.
Further discussion? Ms. Hyler, would you please take the roll on action item I?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Rounds?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Moving on to action item J, authorized mayor to sign contract with the lowest bidder, Magna Construction Services, Inc. for the West Scott and Davidson BNSF Water Main Crossing project.
Move to approve action item J, authorized mayor to sign contract with the lowest bidder, Magna Construction Services Incorporated for the West Scott and Davidson BNSF Water Main Crossing project.
Moved by Councilmember Plaza, seconded by Councilmember Burke. Councilmember Plaza?
I'm not going to go into, it sounds like a lot of the same stuff that Councilmember Smith has so eloquently explained to all of us, so.
Mr. Burke? Further discussion? Mrs. Holland?
I just want to say this should tentatively put to bed an agreement that the city entered into over a decade ago to get water across that railroad castle. So, thank you, Ms. Coleman, for making this happen after you arrived.
Well, even then, it's still taken two years to get it to this point, since she started working on it. Yeah, you did. You did. Awesome. All right. Anything further? And Mr. Smith?
So I'll just go over my spiel I wrote here real quick. 460K was budgeted for each of these, West Scott and the Davidson Waterline Crossing. West Scott low bid came in at 413K and some change, and Davidson came in at 413K and some change. Davidson Crossing is being funded from a 500K grant, and West Scott Avenue is coming from the budgeted American Relief Plan dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. And it should be noted that the 500 that came from Calhoun County, from the commissioners, so another partnership, we appreciate that. Anything further? Seeing none. Ms. Hyler?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Rounds?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Moving on to action item K, water treatment plant filter number one, change orders one, two, and three with stellar J and professional service agreement amendment four A with Gray and Osborne.
Move to approve agenda item K?
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Holland, seconded by Councilmember, no, just pick one, Chapman. Councilmember Holland? That is a hot one, geez.
Um, I kind of mentioned this earlier, but this is one of those things that you need to do to help with water here. There you go.
Councilmember Chapman?
I agree, and stuff like T. Coleman said, stuff is a good aspect to get going. It just makes sense.
Further discussion? Seeing none. Ms. Hyler, would you please take the roll on action M K, water treatment plant filter number one, change orders? Councilmember Rounds?
Aye.
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 The ayes have it. Moving on to action item L, ordinance number 1498, amend city council rules regarding reporting dates for committees. First reading?
Move to approve action item L, ordinance 1498, amend city council rules regarding reporting dates for committees. First reading?
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Plaza, seconded by Councilmember Chapman. Councilmember Plaza?
Basically, this is, all this is doing is just moving one or two committees from the first Monday to the third Monday and flipping the other two to the first Monday, so it's not really that big of a deal.
Councilmember Chapman?
I agree, and it's also moving so that the chamber can be at the second meeting for the first meeting. So it just makes all sense. It makes it more easy for people to be at meetings and stuff.
Further discussion? Seeing none. Ms. Hyler, would you please take the roll on action item L, ordinance number 1498, amending city council rules regarding reporting dates for committees. First reading?
Aye.
Councilmember Rounds?
Aye.
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 The ayes have it. Before we go on to the next portion, I want to remind everyone, we forgot to report this, that the chamber banquet is on January 29th at the Ailene A Casino, for all of you that want to attend. I see that Mrs. Graham is on the line. Mrs. Graham, is that something you have to register for?
Yes, they can go online to the Woodland Chamber site and fill out a reservation. And, you know, we'd like to see the city representative represented well at our meetings. So, you know, the chamber and the city's going to be working together a lot on things this year. I do believe, I think it's heading down that road, and it makes me very excited about that. Like you said, it is at Ailene A Casino back in their entertainment rooms. It will be a sit-down dinner. I believe the price on that is probably going to be, I think it's $60 a plate. Starts at 5 o'clock, social hour, and then the dinner, and then we will have our program. And we will also be recognizing a couple of years of honored citizens of our city with plaques and other things. So it's always a fun time. So I hope that, you know, as many people can come as possible.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Graham. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right, at that, at this time, we are, well, and again, please let Mr. Boyce know, or myself know if you want to attend, so we can get you. Mr. Smith, yes?
So in years past, the city paid for the council members, but their significant other had to pay for themselves.
Correct. The same deal, yes. So please let us know if we'll be bored and how many. All right. And with that, we've come to the moment for adjournments.
Move to adjourn.
Moved by Councilmember Chapman, seconded by Councilmember Burke. All in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? The ayes have it. The time is 8:06. Thank you, Mr. Smith and Mrs. Rounds for attending this evening. And Mrs. Rounds, we hope you feel better.